Give me a minute to fan out, I gotta get a picture because they all believe that DC showed up on this civil panel. Tell me if you can heal our people, heal that grounded life, how bless you one for being here. Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I'm gonna be speaking with my notes this evening, not because I don't have it all in me, but you know, I wanna make sure to get some of this factual data down. Tonight, we came to take care of business, and I so appreciate you all. First and foremost, I wanna introduce myself formally. I'm Dr. Rhonda L. Hamilton. I am the president of the Healthy DC ME Leadership Coalition, as well as the executive, who am I, the executive director for mental health outreach advocates? Many of you in the room on the ground know me, it's just simply Rhonda. We are here to talk about the civil and human rights of many of the citizens that live in your communities. I'm so honored, and I know I'm gonna miss a few introductions, but I wanna make sure to recognize my beautiful, beautiful leaders on the ground in the house, Ms. Barbara Cooper from Marbury Plaza in Cleveland, Texas. My wonderful ETAP family, they represent the community. And I'm a senior community, I tell you what, senior, I'm not a woman, tell them about ETAP. I wanna also recognize the representation of our wonderful CEO of the Whistleblowers Film Festival and Summit on the federal level. Each year, they host a summit on Capitol Hill, and this year will be no different. And yours truly has been asked to assemble, a community-level panelists, to come forward and help folks on the hill and beyond to understand these issues that we have on the local level that are certainly representative of whistleblower understandings. So, welcome to our whistleblower representation. I wanna recognize Brother Tate, Brother Tate with Cruz, okay Cruz. Seriously representing everyone here in Chicago. Very excited. I also wanna keep the pause going for Chaplain Jules Christian with the Volunteers of America. Chester Creek and Clare, and we recently completed a gun violence colloquium event with them over at the Metropolitan Church of Washington DC. It was very powerful and very moving, so thank you Chaplain Jules. Wanna keep it going. I see Janine is in the house, representing the tenant liaison for the Wingate Apartment Community. And please forgive if I don't catch all your faces. See, Ms. Bryson is in the house, thank you so very much, on the ground with the 2022 campaign of Dr. Rhonda L. Hamilton. I wanna recognize Juanita Briscoe in the house, Ms. Phyllis Carm, Ms. Christine Chick, and Ms. Anthony Henderson in the house, representing my family and also the Rhonda Hamilton for Mayor 2022 campaign. Why is that important? I need you guys to understand, before anything, I've been an advocate, a mental health advocate, and there's far too much going on the ground. In 2022, we saw that the divide was so great that we had to do something about that. And so, we threw our hat in the ring for one reason and one reason only, and that was to show up to serve this current mayor. Notice that the community's voice has arrived, so I will keep you on my breath, and we will continue to stay in touch about matters moving forward for the 2026 election season. But right now, I am your mental health advocate, and there are some, there are issues on the ground that connect us. I want you guys to understand that every, every elected official, every candidate running for office, as well as our police department representatives, and many of our civil rights organizations were sent an invitation for tonight's meeting. If you wanna understand the representation of why it was important for us to call this meeting, I want you to understand that our panel should be overflowing, because civil and human rights of our citizens and the conditions upon which their living should not be taken lightly. And much of what we've been dealing with for the last eight years on the ground is representative of them believing that they can continue to ignore the issues of so many deserving citizens. So, please, once again, give yourselves a wonderful round of applause. I wanna take a minute to recognize some very busy souls, some very loyal souls in the room. To my rear, Bishop Gray is standing. He is an interior part of the OVC leadership coalition. He has to get the work done, and was on that ground payment, putting signs up and doing things that necessary. He's always in the background, but today, I wanna bring him to the foreground, because he is my rock. He represents the Agape Men's Ministry, and I thank you Bishop Gray. In the very far, far rear is Oversea Coles, my right-hand man. Thank you again for all that you do. To my forefront here, I've got my coalition partner and advisor, Mr. Perry Reed, CEO of Cincere Seven. Been on the ground over 20-plus years for workers' rights, and you're gonna hear from him soon. He and I will serve as moderators this evening, and I wanna thank my beautiful panel members. I will give Mr. Robert White's team a shout-out. They're getting their act together in the last few moments, because they didn't take us seriously, told us he couldn't be here, but when they got here and saw you here, calls got made. So, we will patiently look to see him show up, and we will give him our attention as well. No one is safe this evening, let's be clear. And if I may further do, I wanted you guys to recognize our two panelists this evening that are here already, and that would be Dr. Edwin Chapman, who has served over four-plus decades over Ward Seven. He is the senior advisor for the Healthy DC ME Leadership Coalition, among other titles. Mr. Chapman is our drug jar in terms of helping us to understand the fentanyl, opioid, and the reality of its connection to the downfall of so many of our citizens in the city. So, please do give him a round of applause. Dr. Waldron is in the house from MedSci, and I would be remiss if I did not recognize Dr. Waldron. I want you guys to know. Representing our EAS Carpenters Union and a very dear friend is Mr. Kunta Bedney, who is here because he understands the importance of the real sustainable career opportunities for our community members, many who represent a part of the crime population. Thank you, Mr. Bedney, for being here this evening. And I'm gonna be very transparent, I asked Mr. Bedney to sit here, because as you look at the headlines, listen to the headlines on the news or read it in the paper, when they talk about jobs, 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 and this crime bill and what they're gonna do, I want you to know that Mr. Bedney was talking about one of our dear council members, that they don't believe in the union. So, would you please help me to understand how we're supposed to find life-changing opportunities for our failed, regaling community members if we don't invite all these sources to the table? Please again welcome Mr. Bedney. Guys, I also want to thank our supporting sponsor, the AHSO Super PAC, which is supporting the message of advancing healthier societal outcomes. Everything we speak from is mental health advocates, and otherwise, is to intentionally impact the outcomes for our community members, and right now, there are far too many that don't have healthy access to impactful outcomes, and so, thank you again for attending tonight's meeting. Mr. Kenny Barnes has just entered the building, father of Go-Go, and I wanna recognize him, please.
Let him get by you real quick, let him get by you.
All right, here we go with these notes, and let's move on. Guys, I want you to know that we appreciate you guys showing up for what will be the start of what we believe will be our new journey together as a city and as the capital of the nation. I think all too often, we get so caught up in the headlines that we don't realize we are truly supposed to be the representation of the nation and the state of our town. Because today, I, before you, I invite you and summon you to stay at the table so that we can go forward together as one, respecting the needs of all DC citizens, and most importantly, setting higher standards, because standards are far too low in our living, in our housing, and in our economic representations. We want to set standards that will positively impact our seniors, our children, ourselves, our community, and our well-being. Today, we make a plan, and dare, and dare that any elected official, any elected official or head of agency in this town, as of their receipt of your petitions from today, moving forward, ignores your right to gain access to cleaner, safer, affordable, and legal housing, sustainable jobs, pathways to documented economic relief, and healthcare services that improves your living. No more lower standards. Today, rebuild a network of community oversight with a pipeline to their offices, to the press, that says, "No more will we watch you ignore the needs of all DC's people." "No more will you mismanage the money that is meant for us," and then claim to not have enough money to help save us. Guys, I'm trying to read the notes, because you know, most of you know how emotional I can get. And then, they claim not to have enough money to save us, "No more." Today, we fight for the restoration of our civil and human rights. Today, we come forward to take back DC. Today, we set higher standards and force them to recognize our power as the people of DC. Before I get into helping you to understand what civil rights are, you guys have handouts that you received at the front, and it's gonna help you to follow along with everything we speak up this evening. We don't take for granted that you would automatically assume what your civil and human rights are, because you've been dealing with what they've been offering you for so long. There are so many that are afraid to speak, and so many that would have been here this evening, but they are afraid that they would be retaliated against, so they send their representatives in to go check and see if the way is clear. Well, I want you to know, the way is visibly clear, and we move forward together as one, so that they don't get to single out any one community, any one citizen, so that they can send a message that you must stay quiet. "No more." Those are the standards that we will reverse. I want you to also understand, as you leave here this evening, that Mr. Phil Mendelson, the chair of the DC Council, Mr. Brian Swab, the elected legal official, the highest legal official for underserved and low-income families, the person that DOB turns over these slumlord cases to that they just can't enforce. He is the single head person that's supposed to come forward and offer you guys the type of legal understanding that you deserve when you're living with mold for elongated periods, when you're living with rat feces and raising children, when you're living during a pandemic with stairwells falling and dirty buildings and leaking ceilings and wood floors that would crumble. He is the person that's supposed to come and answer for the trap houses that you have to live next to, help to navigate resources to help our troubled youth, because let's be clear, we're not gonna get out of this by locking our youth up. So, I want you to know that Mr. Phil Mendelson and Mr. Brian Swab, after five months of chasing them with the wonderful tenants of Marbury Plaza, Wingate, Woodbury Village, Nash Place, Chester Creek Street, with all those wonderful community representations at the table that started back in November, he promised he would deliver Mr. Brian Swab to a public meeting setting such as this, so we could help them to understand that spending district taxpayers' fundings and monies for social justice departments and individuals where there is no social justice for many of the families is a waste of the money. So, we thought we'd give them an opportunity to show up in a setting such as this, to be further educated by you all, and he chose not to, but what they did do, what they did do after five months of chasing is to low-call our tenant association president at Marbury Plaza, to say that they want to show up to the property on June 1st. How does them show up at Marbury Plaza help Wingate? How does him show up at Marbury Plaza help Triangle View or any of our communities in ETAP Circle? We've gotta help them to understand that we no longer intend to conform by the standards they set, but that they will conform by the standards that we demand. "What are civil rights?" you ask. "Civil rights are personal rights guaranteed and protected by the U.S. Constitution and federal laws enacted by Congress, such as the Civil Rights Act of 1964 and the Americans Disability Act of 1990. Civil rights includes protection from unlawful discrimination. The Health and Human Service Office for Civil Rights enforces civil rights laws that prohibit discrimination on the basis of race, color, national origin, disability, age, religion, and sex, including pregnancy, sexual orientation, and gender identity by certain healthcare and human services entities." I want you to understand, I don't intend to sit here and read all this for you this evening, but it was important for me to make the point that you are in the right mood. "What are human rights?" Every person is dignity and valued. One of the ways that we recognize the fundamental worth of every person is by acknowledging and respecting their human rights. Human rights are a set of principles, concern, and with equality and fairness. They recognize our freedom to make choices about our lives and to develop our potential as human beings. They are about living a life free from fear, harassment, and discrimination. Let's talk about that for a minute. Let's talk about the history of DC. Let's talk about the nation's seat of governance, the District of Columbia, which has been divided by race, income, and job opportunities. This divide has further been perpetuated by institutionalized racism and economic corporate enslavement practices that have today contributed to an unfair distribution of wealth, living, and healthcare inequalities. You see, statistically, Washington DC's youth poverty rates are higher than the national average. DC houses a 98% potent fentanyl on the street, along with other opioid drugs and the new drugs out, you heard of Trank? Flash E. Second highest per capita overdose rate in the country. Our dear Dr. Chapman is gonna share some more with you about that. We have approximately three times the national rate for HIV cases. We are ranked number four in human trafficking. We have disproportionately rising homicide rates, but watch this, everywhere we read, crime is down, right? I haven't seen more guns go off since the crime building, son. Haven't seen more guns go off across the city since then, but they say that the crime rates are down. Poverty and social distress are also inhumanely too high. Did you know that in Ward Seven alone, DC families dealing with kidney disease represent at least 44% higher than the national projected average of families dying from and dealing with kidney disease? The eastern region of the nation's capital consistently has low graduation rates, yet we have a two-headed snake in our education system. Charter, charter school, DC public schools, and still we can't manage to graduate youth of color to higher advanced understandings. Urban Institute has reported that white households in DC have a net worth of approximately 81 times greater than the black households. See, we have to put this in perspective, because no one needs to live in fear. These are facts. You've inherited these understandings, and this is why we sit here this evening, because tonight, we draw our line, we say "No more." I want you to understand that black people in DC have faced more than two centuries of deliberately constructed barriers to wealth building, and some of the highest barriers were embedded by design and law, whether enslaved, barred from jobs, because they don't like the young women, Mr. Bedney, and lucrative sections diverted from estate and land giveaways, seeing their neighborhoods targeted for urban renewal. Some of us call it the green new housing deal. We're gonna talk about that.
Yes, we are.
Because nothing is off limits. Watching your housing options squeezed by federal redlining, black families in the district have had little chance to build wealth. As the nation's capital, it is time that we have these uncomfortable conversations in order that we can break the cycles of poverty and create a fairly balanced DC for all of its citizens. The divide between our citizens and our populations must end. Dignity means the right of a person to be valued and respected for their own sake and to be treated ethically. Approximately 30.7% of district residents, or better yet, 20,367 approximate residents, have reported being depressed or having feelings of anxiety. You'd think that might have something to do with the instability in the housing, the drug overdosing, open-air drug markets, unhealthy accesses to healthcare. Our very own Dr. Edwin Chapman says that, "In addition to inhumane housing, food and drug treatment policies by the local Bowser administration, our people are dying due to our..." What is that? neoliberal healthcare corporations, such as United Healthcare, have you heard of them? AmeriHealth, Caritas DC, who are systemically robbing both patients and providers of legitimate services and payments. Tonight, we say "No more." According to StayHereDC.gov, Washington DC's residents pay more taxes than residents in 22 states. And they pay more per capita to the federal government than any state. Yeah, WTLP News has reported as recent as March 2024 that DC has more than 40,000 names that appear on a waiting list for vouchers in the district. Can we get an audit? Can we get an internal audit of our poorly managed systems? Ladies and gentlemen, tonight, tonight, we set a new standard. We say "No more." Guys, DC's discrimination law, just in case you think that they have nothing to reference, DC's discrimination law says that every individual shall have an equal opportunity to participate fully in the economic, cultural, and intellectual life of the district, and to have an equal opportunity to participate in all aspects of life, including but not limited to employment, places of public accommodation, resort or amusement, or educational institutions in public service, and in housing and commercial space accommodations. You see or there any violations? DC has a discrimination law that they are very much inviolational. How do we break these cycles without a intentional political will or proper community-level oversight? Is it realistic to close the 81 times Caucasian wealth gap with the current state of affairs in the district? Can district citizens become homeowners making roughly $17 an hour and living in government-owned housing? We have three-month trade school settings that don't guarantee job placements. Why are we spending $515 million to save wealthy sports franchises, and yet, we have so many out of work? Children lacking advanced education and sky-high truancy rates, not to mention so many undeserved housing communities that are in disrepair. Could we not leverage that money better? Had they not been listening each time professionals such as myself have shown up to their hearings exclaiming that the proper mental health and wellness of our citizens should always matter? I want you to know that in 2021, we delivered a notebook binder to the Congressional Accountability and Oversight Committee that oversees DC. They have something to do with all of the laws that are happening. We delivered a binder, and we requested an audit in 2021. In 2022, we contacted 15 district agencies and officials seeking assistance with delivering tenants in Woodbury Village alone from slumlord housing practices in Ward Eight Southeast DC. We reached out to Mr. Traylon White in Ward Eight. We've reached out to Mayor Mira Bowser. We've reached out to the Office of Attorney General, who was headed by Mr. Carl Ray Singh, and currently, Mr. Brian Swab. We've reached out on both watches. We've reached out to the Office of Tenant Advocates. We've reached out to Mr. Phil Mendelson, the chairperson of the council, our lost count. We've reached out to HUD. We've reached out to Congresswoman Eleanor Holmes Norton's office. We've reached out to the Fire Marshal. We've reached out to DLB, which was formerly DCRA. We've reached out to the chairperson of the Housing Committee, Mr. At-Large, Robert White. We've reached out to the Office of the Inspector General, the City Auditor, Board for the City, Department of Justice, and the DC Housing Authority. Guys, I want you to know that the fight for social justice and the restore of your human and civil rights continues. We are not satisfied with their dismissive natures. How dare them to believe that the DC that I was born and raised and educated in, the folks that raised and nurtured me while my mother spent two decades in St. Elizabeth, and my dear father returned from the military with what was not diagnosed PTSD at the time, and we lost him to his opioid challenges, but I want you to know, back then, it was heroin. We all have a DC story, don't we? It's time, it's time, it's time. Ladies and gentlemen, this is our DC. We set the standard. If we have to start shutting landmarks and bridges down to help them understand that we won't take it anymore, then we shall do that. Welcome to Healthy DC ME Leadership Coalition, along with Cincere Seven's civil and human rights town hall meeting. This should not be like whatever we had before. We're done having civil meetings. You'll have civil protests and demonstrations for the rights of our people and our young people and our children and our seniors. "No more." I just want to show a demonstration. Please raise your hand if you've reached out to any DC elected officials and agencies for relief in your housing, working, or economically challenged situations. Anybody? Keep your hands up if you've received an adequate, responsible, acceptable solution. Raise your hands if your concern has been resolved on any level. Now, raise your hands if you've received no response or if your situational concern still exists. Exactly. DC, it's time to be heard. It's time for action. In your hand, you were given a Q&amp;A form, which is at the back of your handout. We're gonna go to a Q&amp;A session shortly, more of a concern, state your concerns understanding, because one of the hugest things to do is to get it out and not to hold it in. But maybe to show that this evening, you may have felt that you wore a loneliness. We're gonna invite our panelists to speak as well, but I need you all to know that until we can understand what it looks like and we come together, until we can understand that this is something that affects us all, impacts us all. that affects us all, impacts us all, until we are motivated enough to knock on every building, every door in our building, to get our citizens out from behind those walls of despair. We are no victims. And it's time for us all to be a part of the solution. I am Dr. Ronde L. Hamilton. I am a proud Ward Eight raised resident who currently lives in Ward Six. The DC I grew up with, I grew up with pride. Sorry, I get so emotional. I'm trying to be so reserved. But guys, tonight, we make a plan to raise these standards. No more.
No more.
Before I go further, I do want to welcome Mr. Perry Red to the discussion for further overview of issues and challenges facing our communities. Meanwhile, I would ask you to please jot down any concerns or questions that you might have and feel afraid to speak out. We'll read it for you. But tonight, we put everything on the table. Tonight, we leave here with a plan. God bless you all.
Good evening, good evening, good evening. I had a video planned for you, and unfortunately, technical difficulties make that an insurmountable challenge for me. So I'm going to be your video. Dr. Hamilton is gonna be your video. She just listed twelve entities that we reached out to beginning in October of two thousand twenty to address the issues and ills that plague low-income communities here in DC. The majority of the people who live in those communities are black. For many of you or some of you may know me from my past endeavors. I ran for the council in two thousand thirteen, a special election, where I accused one of my opponents of being a criminal, a crook. And people criticized me and called me all kinds of names. They talked about my background, my history. They talked about my shoes. But what they didn't talk about was someone who was in a position of leadership was stealing from our people.
Yes.
Someone who was in a position of leadership and was seeking an even greater position was taking money from developers. And during that election, he dropped out. He dropped out not because he was a person of great character and just an internal attitude. It was because he was on the front page of the Washington Post, smiling into a cup full of a roll for the deals. He was accepting a bribe. I will say to you that we've been looking, digging, and waiting for someone to come forward and tell the truth about why our Office of Attorney General will not prosecute slumlords of the apartment complexes known as Ward Eight and Woodbury Village and Marbury Plaza. Why is it that your elected representative will not push for an enforcement of the DC Citizens Rights Act?
Right.
I'm bitter. I'm extremely bitter. And I've been accused of being an angry black man. I ain't mad at him.
I'm an angry black woman.
All right. So I'm looking at locked arms with folks who are angry at injustice and corruption. So I'm going to, it's gonna be unbelievable somebody will call me about now. Uh, I'm going to share with you. I only have ten minutes to do this, and I'm gonna try to zoom through it. But we have challenges in housing and employment. Without, without affordable, in, 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 inhabitable housing, people are not stable. And if you're not stable, there's only one other thing you can be. And that's unstable. And Lord knows, it is no joy living next door to someone who's unstable. So I do want to talk about our challenges. DC is extremely expensive to live in. Let me tell you how expensive it is. I no longer drive a car. I no longer drive a car because I cannot afford the parking for the speed cameras or, or. I ride an electric scooter now for a man of sixty. Some people think I've lost my mind. Me too. But it's the only way I'm gonna keep my mind. Because otherwise, my life is really unstable. Trying to keep up is all it costs to live in this city. Oh, by the way, for thirty years, I never told anyone that I was a veteran.
Wow, thank you for your service.
And now that I had to, why did I have to? Because I needed assistance with housing. Four years consecutive, I went to the district. And they bragged about how they take care of veterans. And each time I knocked on their door, they told me, "We don't have any money for veterans programs, for veterans housing." And thus, I still struggle. So we have locked arms with you all and advocated and fought with and had doors closed by the people who have been elected to serve. I could, Amy. Oh, I will. So we'll start with Councilmember White. At the time, and I didn't say Robert or Trayon, did I? So what you ever do it was, and it was a vote. They did not respond to the tenants complaints that we had and we brought to them video evidence. We brought to them DCRA findings when the inspections happened. And then we had the election. And now, Councilmember Robert White is the Chair of the Housing Committee.
And he not here.
Oh, my goodness. We found, we got a response from a council member saying that, "Oh, I can't, I can't attend because of the Hatch Act." There's a difference between campaigning and representing. And speaking is not campaigning. And so for any of the council members who may even try that, I say to them, cowardice is very unfilled. But I'm gonna make sure I remind the voters, those who will vote, of your cowardice. So I want you to remember as well. I know many of you were brought up as Democrats and you know nothing else and you bleed blue. But guess what? When people robbing you, all right? If your father was rating your sister, my loyalty to my father would fall by the wayside. So some of our challenges look like this. Your mayor is proposing a five hundred million dollar cut to city programs regarding early childhood educator pay. And that equity fund, unbelievable, all right? And all of us know that our children are our hope. I got twelve grandchildren. And God knows if I fail them, what am I gonna give when I get sixty? And I'm just, I'm just throwing this in as personal, but because we didn't fail our children, my eldest grandson now is, he's in his junior year at West Philly. That's who he was at the White House, all right? Because he loves to own the football field. But it's because we didn't fail him that he will be able to contribute to this society and be a help to his granddaddy. Not believe it. So we've got to invest in our children. And so if your mayor is not investing in your children, then you have to question why that person's your mayor. This budget challenges look like this. There's a sales tax increase that will be phased in start of two thousand twenty-five. And it's supposed to, uh, 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 it's supposed to ramp up the support for public transportation, metro. A sales tax increase is a non-equitable tax. You see, a tax on rich folks is different from a sales tax on you. You see, it looks very small, but you pay more in taxes than folks who have disposable income. Sales taxes as an increase is a war on the poor. All right, it's just a piece of education for you. Understand this, that your mayor, and this ain't about campaigning with anybody. It's just about the leadership and where their minds are. All right, that choice, that's relevant and important. They, the mayor will not be devoting at least the hundred million dollars to the Housing Development Trust. Now, I ain't never trusted you. And that's a great question you ask, why? For those of us who need it, why is immaterial. It is necessary. And there is not a reason, when you can find money, whether it be another fund or otherwise, to prop a charity on us and Washington Sports Team. All right? It's criminal in nature. We talk about the challenges. I've got three clients, all right? And since there's seven, we are in our twenty-fifth year this year. I am proud of it. I never dreamed that a quarter century later, I'd still be doing this work. But I also did dream I'd still be doing same. And folks, some of y'all may be disappointed. And as Dr. Hamilton said earlier, we got to say no more. No more. It is absolutely criminal. Yeah, the ERAS, you run our systems for, right? E-R-A-S. They talking about twenty million dollars. Twenty million dollars. Okay, that sounds big if you go put it all in your pocket. Okay, but you're not. And I've got three clients right now who can't get E-R-A-S, who are facing eviction. And so we've been fighting against these red-letter evictions. We've been fighting against, what's a red-letter eviction, Perry Red? I'm glad you asked. Let's talk about it. These folks who are getting these letters on their doors, looking really official and scary and embarrassing. Says that you gonna pay this amazing amount of money, right? We had a client, I had one client, they said that they, uh, your readers are two hundred and forty thousand dollars. All right? And pay them in thirty days, and if you don't have it in thirty days, you're evicted. And listen, they never told me, they had a court date and nothing. And because of those red-letter evictions, people are moving. They're packing up. And I just thank God that some of them have contacted us and tell them, "Don't you move anything."
That's right.
All right? And what landlords have been allowed to do is charge market rate rent, where people have vouchers, where people have assistance from our government. And then we've got another guilty party, where housing and urban development who issue these vouchers, this assistance, does not come in and advocate for these tenants. And the tenants don't know any better. Some are literally, some of them, it is criminal in nature. So we, together, right? Healthy DC and the District Coalition, we are coming up with ways to get assistance for those who are facing that, all right? Well, we gonna, we gonna help you recertify, because we got landlords who are closing the certification offices. They're closing their, they're closing their property office, their rental offices when it's time to recertify. All right? It's criminal. So the fact is, we need to address the twenty million dollars for E-R-A-S. One hundred million dollars is needed. That's what I need you to demand of the council member. I ask you, that's what I need you to demand of Robert White, of Trayon White, of Councilmember Henderson. I need you to demand this from these council members. Sixty eight, listen, your mayor wanted sixty-eight million for street skiers.
For who?
Yeah, to make it really beautiful going down, delicate avenue. Sixty-eight million, but she gonna take money from E-R-A-S. Right, not affordable money for that. But beautification, that draws more folks in the city. To me, that's the G word. And yes, I got booed before when I ran for saying the G word. Tentrification. Oh, oh, oh. One more time. Tell it the truth. The most of you. And even those who are gentrified, they, they, most of them will recognize. Most will recognize. So it is well and important for us to realize that we have budget challenges, including a rollback in the, uh, the under-income tax credit. That, it, it, it's so much is unacceptable this. And I, I, I wanna talk about this thing before I leave here, because this new Green Hill House. The only thing green about it is the church, the mayor wears them if he can't paint. Now, it's gonna be some folks, and then I'm, I'm gonna make sure that, that, that what I'm saying right now is rebroadcast on our channel. And we're gonna make sure that folks are able to say, "Oh, Perry Red, you, you disparaged us." I disparage no one. I only tell true, because I don't lie well. And so that means if I tell it one time, it's the same every time I say it. There are two proposals. Well. There are two proposals right now that are facing off. And I'm here because I want you to get the understanding, the fullest understanding about this. Because this will determine where we go with their housing, affordable housing, and stable house. There's a bill that is up right now before the council called Social House. And it's all the rage. Folks are just, oh, they're, they're raving over Social House.
The Green New Housing Deal.
Oh, my goodness, say it again. Here we go. Social housing, but you know what? If I know that that's not the correct answer, then what do I do? If I do nothing, then I'm guilty for letting them hold over me. So what we did.
And Chairperson of the Housing agreed, he signed off.
No, he didn't.
About six out of the Mr.
What? I just heard, I just heard Ms. Cooper say seven over. Does that, well, knowing that, knowing that, if I allow that to happen without placing an alternative plan on the table, then I'm just as guilty as they are for passing a bogus law.
No standards.
All right? And we're not going to accept, Dr. Hamilton said right there in their podium, no more. So we introduced an opposing bill. Now, whether or not we'll get a co-sponsor or not is all dependent upon you. We introduced a bill called the HART Act.
That's right, that's right.
The Housing Equitable and Repair Trust Act.
Housing Equitable and Advanced Repair Trust.
It sounds good to me. So what is social housing as opposed to the HART Act? Uh, well, social housing, by definition, and into all the rage across. Uh, well, social housing, by definition, and, and it's all the rage across the country. Neoliberals are introducing it. Sounds like a great idea, so that you don't have to worry about these landlords anymore. The government will own the housing, and you won't have to worry about repairs.
They did such a great job with the current housing.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Now, what happened to our history? Do we, did we forget about housing projects?
Yeah.
I thought we, hey, came a long way, I thought we had walked into the future.
Going to the back.
We just regressed, we just walking backwards in the history.
About her showing up about two years ago, didn't we fail eighty percent?
So here we go. Yeah, social housing, where the government on it? Okay? Oh, Advanced Repair Trust Fund, I'm sorry.
We're gonna save any comments for the next.
Yes, absolutely. So you got social housing. Now, understand this, government-owned housing. So what you get are responses like you've been getting. Two, there's no reason to change the status quo. And who can you, uh, who do you submit your, your request and your complaints to? The very people are not responding to you now. Oh, that's genius, isn't it? Question yourself if you go for that one. So there is no change in the accountability factor with the status quo. So the alternative is the Hart Act. And the Hart Act says this, that if the landlord does not respond, when you have mold growing in your apartment, when you got leaky, you know, I listened to your testimony over and over and over, young man. I'm very proud of it. Cause he didn't, this, this gentleman didn't miss any words. Okay? Told the story about the carpet and the, the, the water, when he walking on the carpet in his home now. And it's squishy, squishy, squishy.
What about the mushrooms in the sea?
Oh, my goodness, mushrooms growing on the, can you imagine?
Oh, no.
Well, some folks don't have to imagine. Two is question, some people don't have to imagine.
Speak, Perry Red.
And just like with these guns, we got to do something different to get it.
Right.
We can't keep doing the same thing and expecting the results. With the Hart Act, if the landlord doesn't respond, and this is in the legislation that we offer this.
That's right.
Right? Dr. Hamilton, did we not?
Take it to school.
If the landlord doesn't act, then the repair trust fund authorizes you to have the repair done anyway.
All right.
And now the fight is not between you and the landlord.
Come on now.
The fight, because it came out of that trust fund, is with the government and the landlord. But your repair happens, it really supposed to happen. Now, I believe that we gotta do it different, and that's different. That's called progressiveness.
That's right.
Okay? It is, it is not something that I just, I stamped the label, it is what it is. So in other words, the repairs are guaranteed. That's how you keep, uh, a, a, a very healthy housing stock.
That's right.
Because maintenance is part of the game. And we don't begrudge anyone making profit. Yes, you can make a profit, but you can't just make it off my back and give nothing back. So we went it different and we say no more. And so with this, when the landlords don't comply with D.C. law, they have to deal with the district government as opposing, as opposed to the tenant having to. So factually speaking, that is a more realistic approach.
Yes, it is.
All right? And we have provisions in it against these red letter evictions, we have provisions in this legislation, that any responsible, any responsible council member, and we're gonna make sure we pass the word along to him. Here is the responsible legislation that will address all those hands that went up. You see, I wanted to just take note of your hands when, when Dr. Hamilton asked for hands, I wanted to take note. Because I'm among them, I'm a D.C. tenant as well. And yes, when my, my water leaked in my, uh, shower, it leaked for dog room. Four weeks that my landlord, I said, you know what? I'm not gonna keep asking, cause now it's mold room, I'm not gonna keep asking. I said, I'm gonna make sure that I go through these processes, and I'm gonna cost you a lot of damn money. Okay? And then I showed them a couple of videos, my property manager, or some of our advocacy, including Ms. Cooper, cause man, man would see. When they saw that, went, huh, all of a sudden, two days later, I got a knock at the door, and they took the whole wall out of my damn home. They took the whole wall out. So, uh, I, and, and no more leak, no more mold. They may, uh, uh, they, not only, what they call remediating the mold?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yeah, pulled all that out, all that out. So it works well. Uh, if you come up with a different plan, we gotta do it different. So we have challenges in employment, and that means wage theft enforcement. All right, the Wage Theft Prevention Act, that's my bet. Have a hand in that.
Right.
And still have a hand in trying to make them enforce it. D.O.E.S. is responsible for that and often failed. So wage theft enforcement, equalizing tipped wages. Understand that now, people that work in restaurants don't have to rely on the good nature of people. But if I'm in a good mood, then you can get paid. That sounds a little slaveish to me. We, we came a long way from there.
That's right.
Right?
That's right.
If folks, if you knew your history, you wouldn't want to walk back into it.
That's right, that's right.
We were, the opposition by council members to unions.
Come on now.
This is abhorrent to me. So when we have council members who say that they hate you, hate.
Come on now.
That they, oh, I ain't with unions, don't, don't know any topic. Listen, for those of you who don't know your history, some years ago, it's getting up there now, but there's a gentleman named April Brando, and, and the Coolin Porters Union.
Oh, yeah.
Black men who worked on trains who got tips. And that's the reason, that's how tips came about, you know? It was because white males said, we're not going to, it's during Jim Crow, we're not going to, uh, accept earning the same wages a black man. So they couldn't even earn wages, but they could earn tips. And people, black people in this country did prevail. They did prevail and, and worked their way through it, but shouldn't have had to. So we're not going to walk backwards into history, and so as you know, that the tipped wages is going up gradually. And on July first, which we had a hand in, right there, seven was at the table, people. We were at the table, paid family leave too. But on July first of this year, just like July first of last year, the minimum wage in the district goes up again. Now, does that help us to, to, to close that wage gap, that, that earning gap, that eighty-one percent of pounds that are running too early now? But this opposition to council members, understand unions and union wages help bring people covered into the middle class, right?
Yeah, that's right.
All right? I've never studied when I identify who I am. All right, I was born in Southwest, raised, raised in Southeast, raised in Northeast, ever known West. But I'm a D.C. native.
All right.
And lastly, I'll say this, that the opposition to those, those unions, that knows, uh, uh, that, that life that is very bad. So we must fight for more unions, even though we're a right to work, state, uh, district state, we should be a state. And I said, non-enforcement of the First Source Act. So we've got someone on this man who's gonna speak to that. But this non-enforcement by Attorney General means that we need a new Attorney General. And I ain't, but I do know this, if we have been here on wage theft issues, on the housing conditions issue, and the selective nature of who we chooses to prosecute, makes me want an investigation. And yes, we went to the I.G. and said, there is a problem here, where we got three violations of the law, but you choose to, uh, uh, prosecute this one, but not this. And if you look at Marbury Plaza, there is no great example.
Yes.
Of, of, of the need to prosecute, much less investigate. Investigate what? Look at, look at the water, you don't have to investigate anything, it's about prosecution. That's what we are demanding. Folks, I want to give it back to Dr. Hamilton, and just know that human civil rights.
I know it's wrong, but please give that young man another round of applause. Mr. Coates Abatney, would you please come forward? Uh, Mr. Coates Abatney is very much another soldier on the battlefield.
Yes. He's coming forward.
My man. Sorry, one daughter that.
All right, all right.
I'd like to just start off by telling my story, how I got here in front of you today, and then I get into, um, solutions that I think that we can do to help our community grow. Um, my name is Coates Abatney, like Dr. Hamilton said, I'm an I am a native Washingtonian. Uh, born and raised here in Southeast D.C.
Yeah.
Part of the city. Um, so I was born nineteen seventy-one. My, my mom, she, uh, got incarcerated in eighty-one. My dad got incarcerated in eighty-three. Uh, my dad never made it home from going to prison, he got killed in eighty-five. Um, my mom came home in ninety-one, but you know, she had to do some years in the halfway house before I was able to get into her care. So I got into her care about ninety-four. By that time, I was already ripping and running the streets. Um, stood in her household for about, say, I last about a year and a half, no more than two years, before I was like back out on the corner, ripping and running, um, I dropped out of high school in ninety-eight, and done my senior high school. I was locked up by nineteen ninety-nine. So, uh, when I came home, um, I went to Sasha Bruce U.P.R. program. Then I got a GED, an apprenticeship certificate. And, um, I wanted to join the Coppers Union, work my way up.
Yes.
Apprenticeship to adjournments of former, not only representative for the Coppers.
Yeah, yeah.
And one of the things that I could say, uh, by growing up as a troubled youth in the streets, right? Growing up without the guidance of a father, a mother, you kind of get, become a part of the environment. And, um, you had no vision, right? I had no vision to see five, ten years down the road. Uh, but when I joined the Coppers Union Apprenticeship, I knew that, uh, when I came home, I had, uh, I had three years on paper. So I needed to do something to make sure that I could survive these three years without getting in trouble. So the apprenticeship way was to go, and, um, I got inside of that, that lane, and I worked my way up, and, um, that's how I got here in front of you today. So I know that the, the youth, like, that's coming up in the underserved communities, is offering them the vision, because we have a lot of first generations of them. Right, so the vision that I had was, once I got inside that apprenticeship program, I knew that how many hours I needed, and how much school time I needed to get to my second, to my third, to my fourth year, to get out of the apprenticeship. And, um, as a, as a convicted felon, I, at the time, I think I started off making like thirteen bucks as a first-year apprentice. And I was like, fourth year, I'd be making twenty-three, that's great.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, that's, that's not even included, like, my benefits, because I got Blue Cross for Sure Healthcare, and newly added benefits.
Yes.
So now, um, pay still went up since I joined, it's about thirty-four odd now.
Very good, very good.
So, um, you looking at someone that's right here in front of you today, that makes six figures a year, like, with a GED.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Come on, man, come on, man, yeah.
So the thing that it can't be done, it can be done.
Yes, sir.
Um, I, I talk to the council members and, and everyone all the time about my opportunity and what I had, and how we could kind of, we, we could do this, we could turn around and turn to the core. And there's some things that we have to do to get there, right? So we need to strengthen the First Source Law.
Yes, sir.
We need to make sure that there's a law that protects D.C. residents, where it ensures them that they have some type of right on the job. Especially these construction jobs, as you can see, our city, our city skyline changing. So this is what I'm talking about, it's something that we, like, we consider a different starting tomorrow.
That's right.
If we have the right people and things to do the right thing, we can start getting, uh, these young men and women off the corner, and get them inside these training programs, and get them on these construction jobs tomorrow, if it's like the right thing to do, right? We can get it done, but we have to, we have to make a real clear path for them, understand the path that they can take, and, and, and start to change their lives, and start to become productive citizens, in which, you know, our cities have the boots. Because as you know, the, the great Larry Bird, he, he built. He think about the work he done, he built Prince George's County, he built Metroville, uh, he built the, the, yeah, he built the high-class plaza of, uh, of Prince George's County. Because all of the workers went out there and set better housing and better opportunity, but they also work in addition.
That's right.
So, um, you know, I, I think that, you know, as a people, I, I come to you, and I offer you for your constituents, for the people you know, your grandsons, your cousins, your brothers, your aunts, a chance to come inside of our apprenticeship program, and, and get, and find a way where they can better themselves, right? Because, um, it's an opportunity for them to make great money, benefits, but also learn, like, what it's like to rights. Uh, because they're gonna learn, like, not to vote for this, but to vote who's helping you.
That's right.
All right, that's right.
And that's the most important thing that we got to understand here, is that we need people to help us understand that part, that, you know, we, as African-Americans, we are emotional people, right? So people always come and hit us with the guilt trip, and we feel sorry, and we, oh, oh, oh.
Send us roses to Valentine's Day, Coates Abatney.
I mean, like, I, what you doing to help me take, put food in my kids' mouth?
Wow.
What, what are you doing to help me provide for my kids' healthcare? What are you doing to help me make sure that I can try to build generational wealth for me and my kids?
Yes, sir.
And that's what I need to hear from you, I don't need to hear, um, I, I do ask that of you, I, I, cause I come from left there.
Come on.
So I want to pull people up with.
Amen.
Yes, sir.
There's a lot of wasteful spending out here, and I don't see our, our, our time dollars working for us to help us with the crime, help us get these young men, uh, young, uh, women in a better place than where they should be. So, you know, we could do it as a city, but we just have to understand, um, laws and everything that's out there. So, um, we need to check into First Source, strengthen First Source. I am proud to say we was in a battle with, uh, project labor agreements. Uh, so anytime the district spends seventy-five million dollars, it would have to be, it should have been done with a project labor agreement. That means you bring union to the tables, community to the table, developers to the table, and talk about outcomes of a job. So we were successful, we're getting that threshold lower from seventy-five to fifty. It don't start until twenty-twenty-six, but, uh, Joe Biden, on the federal side, he put anytime the federal government spent thirty-five million dollars or more, it should be, it should be done with a project labor agreement. So we want to work that, uh, federal side with project labor agreements, we're trying to get your constituents to work, and, uh, when the D.C., uh, P.L.A. stuff kick in, we'll be ready to get them ready to go inside of these D.C. projects. So, um, Dr. Hamilton, have my number, if anybody interested, I don't mind sharing my number with you right now. Give me a call if you know anybody trying to get the work, uh, working for D.C. residents. I want to give young men and, uh, women the chance that I had to change my life, to make this money that I'm making, and, um,
Yeah.
And, um, and, and enjoy giving that city. One of the most powerful projects I, I work on is African American music. So we work, when you going to that museum? I do steps, you go, you walking on my steps, I did all the steps.
Wow, alright, alright, yeah, yeah.
You never write our program, our apprenticeship program. My son, twenty years ago,
Come on.
Went to the apprenticeship program. He signed up in Merlin in Virginia. Virginia called him and said because he wasn't a Virginia resident, he could not be in their program. When he was called in the district to get apprenticeship program, he was the only district person being Merlin in Virginia. Check source.
Okay, well, I don't know which, I don't know which program that was.
He was in the electrician, he was a journeyman electrician.
Okay, yes, the, the electrician was, was probably one of the harder, electrician unit was one of the harder ones to get into. I know electricians, elevator, some, some of them was kind of hard to get into. But that stigma is broke, right? So we have to use things that's, that's, that's for our favor. You know, you heard the word D E I, right? The word is African inclusion. You have to use some things that's, some laws are set for you. And you know how to talk or get use, get them to work for you in your favor so that you can understand how to use these angles. And I think like, come to places like this where we don't talk, or get an understanding of what's out there, um, I think it gives us a better chance. I want to, I mean, like, thank you.
Guys, give Mr. Betney another round of applause. And let's be clear, Hunky D C M E Leadership Coalition means that it takes all of us, it takes the village. So Mr. Betney is not going anywhere.
That's right, that's right.
This is our one timing and this is the network that we are building. So give our, uh, panelists a round of applause. I'd like to invite Dr. Chapman to speak. And we have our representative, uh, Ms. Reed from the Whistleblowers Film Festival and Summit. It is important that we recognize that, uh, as emotional people, it's not okay to sit on our emotions. There are actions that could be taken. We're hoping that if nothing else thus far, this evening, you've learned that the standards that you're living by are too low. Guys, I want to read something, I thank God for our panel. Uh, and thank you, Mr. Betney, for our continued partnership as we go forward to save our, uh, youth and troubled souls. And what Mr. Betney did not mention is that they have an open house that's happening tomorrow. And so I'm hoping that he's going to get some literature away and please don't let him get out of this room without you getting his information. Especially my community leaders, we depend on our big moms. See, my big mama has passed on and you guys, the baton has been passed. So to my tenant association leaders, to my wisdom in the room, when all the city services shut down, you're still there. You are our leaders and we must build the network that our youth need to get out of trouble. This young man has a four hundred and fifty seated classroom.
Yeah, we just sent somebody to him last week. That's right.
Alright, let's keep this energy going so that he can get it all done. I want to read something to you, as I told you, everyone was invited. Dr. Hamilton, thank you for inviting Mayor Bowser to your event. While the mayor deeply appreciates the invitation, unfortunately, due to commitments in the mayor's schedule, she will be unable to make this work for her calendar. So many of the invitations Mayor Bowser receives offer worthy events. But as you can imagine, it is a challenge to accommodate every invitation. Mayor Bowser thanks you for inviting her and hopes that you had a successful event. If I or the Office of Scheduling and Events can ever be of assistance in the future, please do not hesitate to reach out. Ladies and gentlemen, that is the representation of your leader. And of course, I want to read my response, which is very tactful but deliberate. The health and human rights, uh, the civil, excuse me, and human rights of DC citizens are worthy. And at six o'clock on a Thursday evening, someone from your office should have been.
That's right.
Guys, it's time to set the standard.
Yeah, yeah.
On any given day in DC, I can find sideline professors. What I need are soldiers that are ready to stand in the forefront. This is time to act. So will you do me a favor and give a applause as I extend an invitation to Dr. Edward Chapman, who I know is going to come up and take this role. See, we don't have to have leaders that are dismissive or don't get it. We have history living amongst us. We have the talent and the know-how to get the job done. So pay attention, we got work to do.
Hey, Pi. So why would a physician be here talking about, uh, housing? Um, we know, uh, if we really look back, uh, that eighty percent of health outcomes are related to where you live, uh, where you born, where you live, where you work. Uh, and, and we haven't really applied, uh, that rule. Um, my office, I've been in Washington since nineteen sixty-four, I'm seventy-eight. I graduated from Howard, uh, University Medical School in nineteen seventy-three. So that was fifty-one years ago. I should have, uh, retired. But, uh, my office on Benny Road, uh, over the past forty-four years, I've, I've seen evolutionary change. Uh, I've seen, uh, brand new housing, uh, come up all around. Uh, but over the past four years, we've had homeless people living in the median strip with the trolley cars going by on both sides. Uh, we have, uh, open air drug market in my parking, in the medical parking lot behind my building. We never had that before. So all of this, uh, has evolved over the past, uh, uh, five to six years. Uh, if you go by my office now, you'll see fences all around as if, uh, uh, we're fenced in, in a prison trying to keep, uh, people out. But the point is that we have, uh, as Dr. Hamilton has pointed out, we have an economic problem. And that economic problem, uh, has impacted, uh, healthcare, uh, in this city. Uh, we, uh, in the past year, we had twelve percent increase in homelessness, uh, uh, during COVID. Uh, we have now this drug epidemic, uh, that people don't talk about. Uh, uh, they talk about it as a white epidemic. Uh, but twenty-five years ago, uh, I got involved in substance abuse treatment, uh, running one of the three methadone clinics in the district. And I saw, uh, I, I tell people that that's when I really learned to practice medicine. Because at that point, uh, I no longer, uh, treated just high blood pressure, uh, or diabetes. Uh, I, I really started hearing the stories and I just heard several of those stories of the trauma that, uh, uh, this young man went through. Uh, I have heard those stories at least seven thousand times. I ran a methadone clinic that's now over on the grounds of DC General. So, uh, I saw multiple generations, uh, grandmother, mother, child, come through that, that clinic. Uh, and when, and I heard that story, that story, uh, so many times, that we're a product of, uh, our environment. And we call that now, we call that a paravasis or adverse childhood, uh, community, uh, experiences and, and adverse community environment. So we're living, uh, we're actually living in a war zone. Uh, and that war zone, uh, is not of our making. This is, this evolved over four hundred years. So this is just the latest iteration. So, uh, I came to, uh, Washington in nineteen sixty-four as an undergrad. Uh, my second semester in sociology, I was trying to figure out whose class to take and somebody told me to take, uh, Nathan Hare. Those that I know that Nathan Hare was, uh, Stokely Carmichael's mentor. And where did they get their information? Well, they were reading, uh, a book called, uh, The Wretched of the Earth, written by a psychiatrist by the name of Franz Fanon. Uh, so if you really want to understand colonialism and gentrification, you should read, uh, uh, look up Franz Fanon, uh, look up, uh, Wikipedia and you'll get a brief history and you'll understand, uh, who your mayor is. You'll understand who the people on the east side of the city are. And you'll understand, uh, who, uh, what white supremacy is all about.
That's right.
And what, what that really does is, uh, through colonialism and gentrification, uh, the people who, uh, uh, in the middle class, so to speak, of the conquered, uh, become neo-oppressants. They become just like the, the folks who came in and took over. And that's what you're, you're living in every day. So once I figured that out, uh, life became a bit easier for me to navigate, uh, healthcare and, and some of the, uh, some of the trenches and, 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 uh, uh, runs in the road, so to speak, uh, uh, going forward. Our healthcare system is, uh, is really controlled by, uh, corporate America, by investors. And so, so you, you may not understand why we leave homeless people on the street. But if you have ninety-eight percent of, of the residents of the District of Columbia are insured, guess what? Somebody's getting paid whether they're seen or not. So they would rather not have a homeless person come into treatment. Uh, because they're getting paid every month. During COVID, they were making, the, the, your Medicaid insurance companies were making money hand over fist. Uh, they had no incentives to go out and find people and bring them to care. So, uh, when we understood how that system was set up, uh, we decided to fight back. Now, let me just give you an example. Uh, in, uh, twenty fourteen, there were eighty-three overdose deaths in the District of Columbia.
Eighty-three.
Eighty-three. Uh, but in twenty fifteen, fentanyl hit. It was twenty percent fentanyl. Uh, as Dr. Hamilton pointed out, uh, last year was ninety-eight percent fentanyl. Fentanyl is fifty to a hundred times more potent than, uh, heroin. Uh, so what we're not, so we had five hundred and twenty-two overdose deaths, that's a six hundred percent increase. And guess what? Thirty percent of them were among the homeless. They died on the street. These were people who, uh, potentially had healthcare but were never treated. So there's money to be made by these, uh, so-called, uh, insurance companies. Uh, but, but we decided that understanding this system, that we were not going to let that continue. That we were going to come out into the community, uh, we were going to, uh, find people and we, we're going to change that healthcare system by using people in the community to find people in the community who have high blood pressure, who have diabetes, who have, uh, mental health problems. We know who those people are. We can bring them into care, uh, and we can force the system to pay for, uh, pay for them. Because we know that, uh, if we don't, uh, one, uh, one of three things is going to happen. They're either going to die, they're either going to end up in jail, uh, uh, or they're going to end up, uh, uh, homeless on the streets. So, so our focus is the fact that we know that, how much do you think a homeless person is worth? Give, give me a guess, anybody? Untreated, a homeless person with.
Uh, twenty-five thousand dollars.
Not even close.
Not even close.
Hundred thousand dollars. Criminal activity. Uh, fifty percent of my patients who, who were fifty-two years of age on average, uh, seven years ago, had hepatitis C. Ten percent already had AIDS because it's an older population. So when you add the medical costs, the criminal costs, and guess what? You still have to clean up behind them. And if they're standing up, that means they got something to eat, they got something to drink. Where did they get that from? So when you, and some, uh, had to, uh, were abandoned by their family, so they left their families. So all of those are social service costs that you have to add up. But guess what? If you spent fifty thousand dollars on five thousand homeless people, that comes to two hundred and fifty million dollars. That's half of what, uh, the mayor gave to Ted, the owners, uh, to renovate his, his stadium. Uh, you could spend twenty-five thousand on housing and food and another twenty-five thousand on healthcare and still save two hundred and fifty million dollars. Not just one year, but every year after that. So it's how you do the math. We have to sit out and show them how to do the math. It's where you put the money, uh, where, and where you make that investment. And if you make that initial investment, then it, it replicates year after year. But you're, but not only that, you're creating jobs, uh, within the community. The goal for us is we can take care of each other. Uh, so I'm here to, to, uh, you'll see a lot of emails from me, uh, through, uh, uh, Dr. Hamilton. Uh, uh, and I can explain, uh, from an economic standpoint, from a medical standpoint, uh, how all of this fits together. Housing saves money.
That's right.
Thank you for hanging in there, please give Dr. Chapman another round of applause. The Coalition of Leadership and Leadership, they show up ready, they don't have to get ready because they stay ready. Thank you, sir.
One thing I forgot to tell, I lived in Marbury Plaza, uh, until forty-eight years ago. Why I got married. And, uh, then I lived a couple blocks from here for a couple of years right after I got, got married.
And it was the creme de la creme, correct?
Yeah.
It was the creme de la creme, I mean, all of the notables lived there, right? Yeah, and I wish they'd turn it into public housing, imagine that. Uh, guys, thank you so very much. We're going to open it up for question answering in just a moment. I want to invite, uh, Ms. Marcel Reed to the microphone. She's another powerful leader because you need to know that your emotions need to transition into speaking out. And this is a young lady who can help you to understand how to do that and how to do that and be heard. Ms. Marcel Reed, would you please come to the mic? Please get your questions ready, we're going to open up for you soon as she finishes. Thank you, Marcel.
So obviously, I did not come here today to sit on the panel. I just ran out of the house because I remembered that I said I was going to be here, so voila. I am not from DC. I am not from the east coast. I am S O C, I'm straight out of Tomton. And Tomton is a blighted area. Everything bad that you can think of, every derogatory term, every dismissive attitude is directed at the people where I come from. It is a population of less than eighty thousand. And we have produced the most brilliant people. We don't have to talk about Kendrick Lamar. We can go all the way back to the Bushes who used to live in Tomton. And nobody tells you that. We were a upper middle-class community. Every street had a swimming pool. The lawns to this day are still manicured. But the people living inside of those facade houses are broken. And they're broken by a system that will not let them flourish. That fears the raw intelligence of these people who have been pushed to the side. So the same way that you go back, Dr. Chapman, to how you understand sociology, I go back to Dr. Joy DeGru.
Yes.
And she talks about post-traumatic slave disorder, which most of us suffer from. And then you overlay that with bully lynch and terrorism. And it is very hard for some of us to get anywhere. Because every time you look in the mirror, what you see is everything that everyone told you you didn't know. I am a whistleblower.
Alright.
That's how I got here. I told the truth trying to save some people that I had taken responsibility for. And I had been left come to. When I moved here, I moved to McLean, Virginia. When I moved here, I moved to McLean, Virginia.
God bless.
I didn't move to DC. DC for me was a place I visited one time when I was stationed in New Jersey. And we came up to see the memorials that that was in, the monuments. Once I moved, I was in a bakery. And I heard Ambrose Lane on the radio.
Yes, yes.
And I left the bakery, went to my car, found the child, which I had never, I had never too,
All right.
Eighty-nine point three W B W. Right, I, I didn't know anything. Um, Ambrose Lane made me remember why I left Compton and the anger I had when I left Compton. I wasn't ashamed of the people and I wasn't ashamed of being from Compton, but I was ashamed of being consistently undervalued, consistently told that I was a certain type of person. And I was none of those things. There was nothing that they assigned me. But what I was, was I knew that there had to be a way out. So when I came to the district, I started to think, if there's anywhere in the world you're gonna change the world, it's gonna be in DC. Everybody in the world comes to DC to change, to change their lives and the lives of the people around them. But when I speak to people from DC, they don't value it. I am always arguing with people about the fact you don't value who you are and who you live and what you can do. So I would give these whistleblowers summits on Capitol Hill because whistleblowing was considered to be something that white people did. You know, there was Edward Snowden and there was, uh, there were, there were all of these high-profile, um, whistleblowers. Um, there was the, the guy that just died last year. He did the Pentagon Papers. You know, all of these people were cons, but there were no black whistleblowers. Do you know Title VII whistleblowing is not even considered whistleblowing. The whistleblower community pushes it off. It's a Title VII complaint, we don't wanna deal with that. Because those are complaints that specifically target discriminatory practices. And we don't wanna talk about that. We wanna talk about the banker, we wanna talk about the, the, um,
Military.
The military-industrial complex. We wanna talk about, um, intelligence officers, all of those things we've had at the summit. But what we did not have was black whistleblowers. So I started to give this, uh, this event on the hill after I became a whistleblower. I've been noticed to me, I didn't know. I just asked a question about the money and next thing I know, it's all over. And, and when I invited them up, the people in DC wouldn't come. I would go and say, this is an event, come to the event. Because this way you get to meet your, your congressperson. I'm not talking about Eleanor Holmes. But you get to speak to congresspeople. You understand that these laws, right? It's just like the city council. You understand that there is a city council and a federal city council, right? You get this. So, so if you understand that, you can't think that everything is gonna change 'cause you're in the Hudson Building. Because there's an entirely different group of people that are calling shots. But if you don't understand that, and why don't you understand that? Because you don't understand about the structure. I'm from Compton. You live here. The question is, why don't you know the structure? And the answer is because you're always being dominated.
Yes.
Yes.
You know, you ask question A, they answer B. You ask B, they answer C. You ask C, they answer D. By the time it's over with, you're so angry and confused and misdirected till you don't know the questions to ask.
Yes.
I have no access to anything anyone else doesn't have. The only thing I'm telling you is, this is the most important city in the United States. We look to you. And the only way the rest of us, the people from the Comptons and the Willbrooks and the, you know, whites, the only thing we talk about is what they do in DC.
That's right.
And you're in DC. So I just wanna say that this burden is more than just you and your block. It's us and our block.
That's right.
And we want to look up to you because for us, DC is the shining city on the hill. They're not the way they're talking about. We wanna see black people flourish. We were proud of Marion here.
Yes.
Because we understood what he was doing. We understood everything was going against him, I'm sorry. But we also understood everything that he did. And I'm only out here telling you that after working in social justice in DC, I have marched, it must be three hundred miles in DC. You know? I've worked on everything from living wages to housing. But this city is too important. You people are too important. This place is too important.
That's right.
Because we're not just people, we're not just a place. For us, for all of us out there in the hinterland, you guys are holding the torch. And all we're seeing is the torch going out. So it, it may be personally uncomfortable for you to have a bad mayor, but for us, it's, it's more devastating, man. Because you're the best educated, you're the brightest, you have the most access, you're closest to, you understand the law.
That's right.
Why in the world isn't coming to DC transformative to be? But it isn't. And that's because you guys have got to, for the rest of us, pick brave, strong, intelligent
Yes.
people who will go forward regardless. You need a group of whistleblowers.
Yes.
Who stand up and speak up.
Yes.
Because the whole world, especially for us in Compton, we need you. Thank you.
Keep up the cause, Ron. I'm riding on fire, we are running out. Thank you very much, Ms. Marcel Reed. I know she needed to come and speak. But guys, this is about empowerment. I'm a mental health advocate and I realize that we've been living with so much. And it is time for us to take our power back. If we're gonna take this city back, you gotta take your power back, amen?
Amen.
All right, all righty. Question and answering time. I know that Mr. Bettany is somewhere in the room. I'd like to send him, Mr. Bettany, we got some questions. Guys, this is your time, you got thirty minutes out. And I am so, so proud of you all because you could've just left, you didn't have to take the time, but you showed up. Guys, we're building a network because there's an action plan. So we're gonna do Q and A for the next fifteen, twenty minutes to make sure your voices are heard, make sure you get some questions answered. More importantly, you were given a handout. In your handout that you got, it talks to you a lot about what we talked about this evening. Um, there's one thing that's not in your handout, and that would be the HART Act legislation. Those of you who aren't tonight, Tom Reed, who wanna be better, uh, informed before you show up at that va- ballot box to make an informed decision. I bet you have a lot of choices, but I mean, really, it's time for us to go to work. And it starts right on June fourth, or actually before June fourth. Because Ms. Reed could, I couldn't have said it any better. Why in the world would folks all over the nation come here expecting us to do something that we're not doing? We have to raise the standard. All righty, Q and A. All you gotta do is hold your hand up and, uh, I'll call on you and you can stand up. We'll start here, come around and come right around here. And don't miss your blessing. We're talking about mobilizing. We have a plan of action. So, hold tight. Hello, how are you? Introduce yourself for us.
My name is Brother Khan.
Brother Khan, welcome.
I'm a writer and activist.
Awesome, a writer and an activist, all right. What's your question?
You can call me good troublemaker.
That's a good one, for troublemakers. You know, a lot of troublemakers, peaceful troublemakers, J. Martin Williams, and so thank you.
And I'm a, and a student of the most honorable Dr. Chapman.
Oh, then you are, you are peace then, as they say.
I want to please ask one question.
Sure.
You see, I can see the health disparity, right?
Health disparity, yes. Economic, yes.
Between the black and the white.
That's right.
Right? And the four hundred years of slavery,
That's right.
segregation, lynching, right? One thing I'm not sure why people don't demand is reparations. I, I think reparation is the key. Why are people shy in calling out for reparations?
I don't think that they're shy. We have to be realistic. And if you wanna join the commission and we'd like to start that language, we will support that. I think the reality is that we are people that if you have every conversation across the city about issues affecting us, we're at the bottom of those lists. And they're not raising us up any sooner than they are. So as I mentioned earlier, just as in housing, it becomes challenging to get folks to speak out because they're retaliating against. This is systemic. So if you're willing to prepare something that will allow us to address the systemic challenges for being able to receive reparations, because we're not interested in just making headlines. We want action. And so we go ahead on that question, Mr. Reed.
Well, we did have, no, no, I wanted to speak to the reparations. We did have a hearing, uh, in the last council session, sponsored by Councilmember McDuffie. And so reparations is an issue. I know, uh, seven, we've been, um, supporters of reparations for, uh, two decades. But here in the district, um, Councilmember McDuffie, um, is, uh, has, has a committee, a subcommittee dedicated toward that. So just know that it is an active, uh, ongoing conversation here in the district. And, um, we'll find a way to connect you if that's of interest.
Actually, we'd like to probably put our own committee together and help them along. Because I happen to be of the, uh, class that wants action now. Everything's coming along, we gotta get them along. So I appreciate that.
And, and we have some folks who are here in the city, uh, from, uh, uh, at, 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 G, uh, Georgetown, Georgetown. And they have a, a library set up just for black folks who, um, are from the district. It's a, uh, uh, just a section of the library. So that you can find out if you, uh, are descended, yes, if you're a descendant of the school. Because they're paying reparations to those who had, uh, forebears who were slaves at G.
I love that explanation. And again, I'd like us to put a commission together, maybe after we shut a few landmarks down and get their attention on the right level, then we can start moving forward with some of the things that we would see happen. We love that question, especially from our brother. Thank you. Now, are there any other questions? Stand up, please. Hello, Desmond, Mr. Quaid, how are you representing Marbury Plaza? Proud and strong, what say you?
Good, I have a quick question, Rhonda. Um, the tenants' bill of rights. Is this the current one that's, um, exists in DC right now?
Yeah.
Okay. Because I'm not sure if others who are in the room are aware that we, you know, there's a proposed tenants' bill of rights. Because you talked about, you know, the outcomes as far as, we talked about in housing as far as, um, due to the, uh, fact that, you know, there are some punitive, I call it, uh, measures and reinforcements that will be good. And if, you know, there are people in the room can get a copy of that, they will see what we're advocating for as far as the tenants' bill of rights for, proposal, uh, proposal, that we would like them to press all the senators, I mean, the council members, to get on board so they can vote for this, um, proposed amendment that will better, um, you know, en- enforce the laws that will help all DC tenants, not just Marbury Plaza, not just Woodbury, but all tenants in the District of Columbia who are, um, you know, living in DC.
Oh boy, how I love my empowering tenants that already know where we're going. And yes, Mr. Quaid, that is part of the action plan this evening. Anyone that didn't get a copy of the DC tenant bill of rights when you came in, please stop by the table on your way out. Anyone wanting a copy of the HART legislation that was submitted again, please, on your way out, let Dr. Ann Coles know at the registration table and it will be on your email. Is there anyone else on this side of the room? I'm coming, Bobby. Hi, how are you? Welcome, your name is?
How y'all doing? I'm Kiana.
Kiana? Will you come, flow forward so we can hear you?
I live right here in Rainy Falls.
Awesome, welcome.
And I grew up in a Marbury area.
All right.
But I have noticed that we don't have any boys and girls clubs.
Right.
I grew up with boys and girls clubs, not recreational centers. Um, boys and girls clubs, sixth district right there, I've been a row. We had counselors, we went places. I knew how to ski, skate, golf, everything that they didn't expect for us to know how to do, right?
All right.
But I noticed we have these ANC commissioners and leaders around certain neighborhoods and neighborhoods, right? We don't have the, the things that I have on up. So when you say that the violence of the youth, we always start at an age where we missed a part of, a point where we have playgrounds and stuff that have age requirements and limits on it. Like your child can only be, uh, seven to play at Eastern Market. I have an eleven-year-old. But if my son goes to the school, it's gated up.
Yes.
They can't play at the playground. So, where do they go? If they go to a store, oh, this again, they're doing something. So, my question is, what, what's gonna happen in between time? I know we focused on our babies, then we skip, and then we look at the teenagers. But what about the in-between time? And I notice like, I'm sending a lot of my elders in here. So I know that everybody know what I'm talking about. We're skipping something.
Yeah, yeah. It's a generational design.
These recs?
And I start with our voting and our leadership. And that's a wonderful question, but Piana, it starts on a community level. I'm a white baby and I'm a mayor of Bay Area as well. The reason why I got in is the reason why I realized that I had to straight, straighten my street cred to come to the forefront, because I know you all are out there. We were all raised at that, right? We took the village, right? We all have stories. But the reality of having folks migrating here or having folks dictating standards of living that we don't conform to, that are leaving our babies behind, warrants that we speak up and show up. There's five hundred thousand people registered to vote in DC. Two hundred thousand are showing up. And so this leadership is using these circles, these cliques, these ANC, not all, but most. These gatekeepers, why? Because we don't show up to the ANC meetings. And that's why I put the bat in the sky. I called on my big mamas in the community because the baton has been passed to us. A lot of us know what that looks like. But to stand up by ourselves means that they're gonna handle us when we go downtown. In twenty-twenty-two, was it, Ann? There was a debate with, uh, Chairman Mendelson and Mr. Trayon White. Our local DC leader, overseer Ann Coles, asks, what's going on with the community centers?
Because he's a leader.
And you know what?
Yes, he is.
What's going on with the community centers? Where are the programs, right? We take that emotion and we channel it because we have to come out on top. It means nothing, I got some names too, but what I realize is that they're still getting in office. Right? So what I understand is that this is a journey. We didn't win those battles, but we gotta win this one. Because enough is enough. Okay, we allowed her to become a free-term mayor. She's nowhere near a mayor of Bay Area. No. They tear mayor merit down, but the things that they're committing, the crimes they're committing against his people today is much worse than anything that they could bring against him.
Yeah.
Right? And they know this. But the reality was in twenty-twenty-two, Phil Mendelson, uh, told overseer Coles that there was no funding request from the council member for the community centers to be funded. So it's ridiculous when he continues to get in office and continues to be so popular when the very question you ask rests on the heels of all of these so-called elected officials that show up when it's time for you to vote. But then when you need them and when our youth perish, where are they? I saw a tweet, thanks to a dear friend of mine in the room, on social media. Mr. Trayon White, not picking on him, but they, they put it out there, we gotta use it because we gotta empower ourselves. We gotta know what we're dealing with, right? He posted that, you guys need to pay your rent. Too many people are abusing the ERAP program.
And the mayor's saying,
Come on, Mayor Bowser, show them what comes next. But just before that, he showed up with a group of young men who wore a, with T-shirts representing him, talking about they don't like the union and where are the, you know, jobs and things like that. So he's got his feet in both places, which is very dangerous. So what I saw, being a DCite, I gotta reach the baby mamas, I gotta reach the big mamas, and I gotta call him out because he is using our brothers on the corner.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yes, he is. And I know that our brothers on the corner gotta go home and sleep and they gonna go home and sleep with. So our brothers will follow us. And so we are the weapon that's needed to change the city around. And so I've been calling on my daughters of the city because we are the anchor. Uh, men go out, they protect, they earn, but we take care of the communities and the babies. And so I love your question. I hope you stay at the table because we got work to do. You're absolutely right. It's gonna take that village and the first order of business is to reconnect. Reconnect and put the levels back in place. Our children are very disruptive and disrespectful to our elders. They don't know their history. They don't know what they belong to. Some of us can't go to the block, but many of us that still can must.
Yes.
And that's why I'm, we're gonna do this together. Very serious about it. I've called on my daughters of the city.
Amen.
DCI, come on, right? What they're doing today. So you stay tight. You keep asking that question. As I want you on task force, as I want us all front and center. See, we're not there where it counts. And we're gonna change that. So thank you for your questions. Your hands up.
Hi, my name is DeBoris Key. I'm a native Washingtonian.
Will you do us a favor and step out? We really wanna hear what you're saying. Thank you so much.
I have two questions.
Use the mic.
Where's the mic?
Right up there.
Thank you so much.
Yeah. Hi, my name is DeBoris Key. I'm a native Washingtonian. I was born in nineteen fifty-five. I lived my childhood in Ward Five, right by Rhode Island Avenue, Eastern. Mount Rainey was across the way. Graduated McKenna Tech. I've lived in Ward One, Seven, Eight. I currently live in Ward Eight. Couple minutes walks from the Adcoast Library. I have two questions. One, you, you said "we" multiple times and how people could get involved and the structure and so forth. The second question is, the people on the city council make the decisions, and until you get different people on the city councils, you're not gonna get different decisions.
That's right.
What, what, what kind of plans do you have to create an effective political organization? More so on the level of Panthers, which did wide social education of people because the people don't understand. And like you said, black people are extremely emotional and can get, and people know what buttons to push to get the reaction out of people. What plans do you have to basically ultimately put people on the city council who you don't have to beat over to do what you need to do, but go up there with the purpose to do these specific things? Because until that happens, then we're all reacting to what other people have already decided is gonna take less.
I love that question. I asked you again on the number one, when you say the "we," give me the specific of the "we" you're speaking on.
Well, I've heard you say "we" are root. Who is the "we"?
Oh.
And what, you know, I first said task force, whatever. Who is that? How's it structured? How can people get involved, et cetera, et cetera?
I love that question. Thank you. Uh, the "we" is HealthyDCandMe.org is our website. Uh, I believe it's on the literature you received this evening. HealthyDCandMe.org is our leadership coalition, and we are a coalition of like-minded, like-mission organizations that have separate organizations, but when we come together, we come together because we all believe that they're, we're walking and marching in the same direction. We realize that the need was much greater than any one of our organizations could provide. We realize that there were brains in the city that would help us to be able to bring about, uh, the education, the experience, and the proof in order that you guys would be mobilized to come forward and join us. So I love that question. And before I tackle question number two, I'm gonna allow Mr. Doctor Chapman to speak.
So I'm so glad that you asked that question. I failed to mention that when I went to medical school, I was trained by two psychiatrists, Dr. Elise Delaty and Dr. Francis Welson, if you're familiar with that.
Yes.
So, uh, I was in the class of nineteen seventy-three. The ISIS papers, she taught us from the manuscript because it actually wasn't published until nineteen ninety-one. Uh, so, uh, you have to go back and look at some of the symbolism there. But you also have to understand the economics, and she mentioned that. She mentioned the federal city council. So our government is controlled by the businessmen downtown. Can somebody tell me who the chair of the federal city council is? Anthony Williams. So, so if you look at the Washington Post, I got the slide because I give a lot of talks around. And there's a picture with the mayor and then Anthony Williams is standing behind a gallery place, uh, talking about what their plan was for downtown. That's it. That plan is the same trickle-down that Ronald Reagan, uh, pushed. You know, that we'll, we'll give the money to the, to businessmen, and because they do good, uh, that money is gonna trickle down to you. That's, that's what they're selling. So, so, so if you, once you understand that that's where they're coming from, then you can begin to plan how to get around. The thing that they do, places, uh, uh, you know, that look like, uh, they're cosmetic, uh, uh, solutions, but they're not, they're not real economic solutions to bring down the community.
Thank you, Dr. Chapman. I, I just wanted to underscore. My friend Perry read over here when he was explaining to you about taxes, raising sales tax. So when I, you know, first came here, I used to talk about poverty tax. Because everybody was talking about death taxes. But the real death tax in our community is poverty tax. We may, we, we may, we pay a higher percentage for everything that we purchase.
So a loaf of bread may cost somebody, and the rest of the world, five years, ten years, ten years. So when you realize that, you know, time is finite, every day is finite, time is finite. So we do have to work our hours.
Boris, right.
When your apartment is robbed, you couldn't pay the rent insurance. So you can't replace.
You're gonna do that now.
Well, that's all I'm saying, is that there is a, a tax on poor people. It's a poverty tax. No one talks about it. And I think the reason no one talks about it is that we have not learned the one trick that the Republicans have learned that we haven't learned, no matter what you are.
Come on.
They can name it. And we have to discuss it for hours and hours on end. But if you can name it, then you can fix it. Because everybody knows what you're talking about. So when you say poverty tax, we don't have to have a thorough conversation. We don't have to have addendums, and we don't have to preach over and over again. When I say poverty tax, you say poverty tax applies to who? Say me.
That's right.
So poverty tax is my tax because rich people don't pay poverty tax.
That's right. Yeah, let's keep it going. When I say social housing and the Green New House, they'll, you know, they talking about public housing. And who they talking to? So that's what it's about. It's about understanding the importance of us coming forward. I love your question, um, gentlemen, leaving the room, but the reality is, we came here for action. If anything like me and our coalition, members of our coalition, retire me, reckon action. And we recognize that the leadership isn't gonna change, and we realize that we have to be everywhere, everywhere. And so, uh, those of you who came in this evening, you signed in, I hope you left your email. I hope you left your phone number because it starts with building a network of folks that will show up. When you look at all of the other issues and other groups and populations that come to the nation's capital for change because they wanna see change, they believe that this is where change happens. Everyone else is getting their issues heard but us. For some reason, we don't stay together. We don't come together, and we're not teaching our young people to come together. We know wisdom knows, but your legs gonna be a little weary, so you gotta bring those youthful legs forward in order to do that. There's a generational divide we hear about oftentimes in our workshops. And the reality is that you can be right, and we can keep thinning out, or you can open up, be open-minded, and understand that we must connect with this next generation if we're gonna go forward. They're gonna inherit everything we're doing. And who would have thought in 2024 that we'd be meeting, just as the folks in the civil rights era had to meet? There were people that marched here with no shoes. How far are you willing to go for the freedoms that we're sacrificing? So that's what it's about. And so if you signed in this evening and got an email and gave us about ten more minutes, you're gonna hear our proposal of an action plan. And then we're gonna invite you to join us, and you will already be a part of the network because we have a way to reach you. The problem is, when we reach out, will you show up? Because it's important to show up. Thank you so much. Any more on this side of the room? Okay, I'm gonna start right here. Oh, okay. Dr. Chapman?
Yeah, I just wanted to make, uh, one more comment. Do you know why, uh, the Wizards in the Caps came back to DC? Why? Because of an eighty-year-old senator, black senator in Portsmouth, Virginia, refused to, uh, release, uh, that money in, in Virginia. It had nothing to do with Muriel Martin. It had nothing to do with, with, I mean, everybody should know that. So what happened is that he was forced to come back, but she gave him two five hundred and fifteen million dollars anyway.
Yes.
He had no place to go. No place to go. That's, that's one example. The other example is, what just happened? On Tuesday, in the state of Maryland.
Yeah.
What happened? Russell Brooks won, and she was outraised ten to.
Ten to one.
Ten to one. Ten to one. We have the power.
Yes.
You have the power in the vote, and that's how you beat white supremacy. You have to use your power.
One more question here.
So we're just talking about the, uh, arena deal. I know that, you know, that Virginia is a right-to-work state. So right now, the House is like, the, the House and the Senate is Democratic in Virginia right now. So unions was pushing that if, if, if they get that ringed deal, they wanted a union there. And they ain't wanna do that union deal. And that's what's in the deal because we had the House and the Senate out there, and they pushing back to DC. But they wanna do a union in DC. So it's only six million dollars. So we looking to get people to work, so please, let's get there.
Dr. Muldrem and, uh, Mr. Kenny Barnes have a comment as well. Dr. Muldrem?
I just have a second question. Uh, I wanna ask, where, where, where is the church of these, kind of the black churches?
I love that question. I love that question. There is the black church in all this. Well, I tell you one church that stepped up to the plate. Let's give a round of applause to the church of Black History. Please, technically, call this one, just like this, and they said, "Doctor Hamilton is for the community." And I want you to know that that's big because for the eight years we've been on the ground doing this work, and they realized that I would not be moved, that our coalition would not be moved. They started trying to shut down venues that were DC-related in order that this message would be out. But silly rabbit, I'm a DC girl. I have no fear. Started in Seattle, went to the Senator in the seventh, in Ward Seven, chucked up at the Pan, and rapped. I tell this story often because we need these borders to come down. Ladies and gentlemen, I want you to, uh, be patient as we hear from another legend, Mr. Kenny Barnes.
Thank you to our future mayor. Since our future mayor, but I tell you what I want to say. Number one, we have a issue in our own community. We need to work it out together. We do that work well together. Now, Rhonda is one of all these organizations. There are organizations all over the city that won't talk to her, which is crazy. Since the leader, we need to be with her.
Yes. Yes.
There are people on this stage right now who realize the problem. And let me tell you something else. When you see a people, and the cameras are not there, you know they serious.
All right.
All right.
We have people right here, Dr. Chapman, uh, Bishop is here.
I'm here.
I know you're here, Bishop. But we have people like that that are really concerned. And we got enough organizations. Their partners are with Rhonda, called Diamond City Farm. We already did the farm, and we need leaders like Rhonda. And one more thing, people and I are a member of the Roadie Club of Washington DC. People is laughing at me, coming to my idea, saying, "What's else Roadie Club?" Okay, it's a bunch of white people with money. They need to be in the team. I represent them. I represent Claude, Bishop, Charlie Paul. And I represent Dr. Chapman, Bishop, and all them right here, and Rhonda. That's what I want to say. And we need to look at the people that always got their heads up. Her immunity code, running discussions, "Where's my money?" Those people, you want to look sideways, okay? That's why, look at people that are here because we want to start the farm.
That's right.
They great job, Rhonda.
All right. Those of you that know Chuck Brown, those of you that know Chuck Brown, Mr. Barnes was responsible for making GoGo possible in DC by the generation of Chuck Brown. He supported our children, now they're history. Time is upon us, so I'm gonna speed this up, but not before I get my ladies involved. And Kenny, thank you so much. We call those folks opportunists. But true DCites know what opportunists look like, and we'll deal with them all when the time comes.
I just want to.
What's your name?
My name is Karen Settles. I'm a warrior in the field. So I want to, um, thank you for talking about the unions, and I'm very proud of you.
Yes, indeed.
I want to say that. I want to thank the first speaker. Thank you, my name.
Me? Oh, I'm Terry Gray.
So, Mr. Terry, um, you spoke about the Housing Trust Fund?
Yes, ma'am.
You spoke about, um, this new proposal that you sent out called House? Is it called House?
Uh, Hart.
Hart. So I would like to see the Housing Trust Fund transferred to the heart. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna. So I went to see, and I've been to Barnes many times about housing. And the last time I went, I done the time to ask her, well, what was, what was, what is the Housing Trust Fund for? And she said, "For developers, then," okay? That was then. Let me just say this. I'll say one more thing. There is something called the Community Benefit Agreement. And, and one, first, understanding and then agreeing, because I always, those need to be clear. Um, bottom line, that's our intro. That's our intro. When those developers come in our community and disrupt our community. They don't even follow the, consume the repertory of Batlin Law. So the habitat is being totally, uh, riled up, so everybody has roaches, and that's why. But why don't we disrupt that?
I want you guys to please give Ms. Settles a round of applause. She loves her warrior community, housing, ANC, over Ward Seven, fighting without ATAP community. And chairman of housing, former chairman of housing as well, so she knows what she speaks. Guys, the point is, we have some tools amongst us. We've gotta come together. First and foremost, is there anybody in this room that did not leave their contact information at the front table? Okay, great, then we're good. We have the network form. You're gonna get a follow-up from today's meeting. Um, I wanna read five things, and I wanna let Ms. Barbara Cooper speak really quickly. We have to shut down the church. It's been so gracious. So Ms. Cooper, please speak and be brief for us.
I'm gonna try to keep this brief. First and foremost, I wanna say thank you. Thank you, Rhonda, and thank, I wanna thank each and every one of y'all because your first story, when you talked about being locked up, being incarcerated, I've been there, done that. I know when it feel like a go-through depression, been there, done that. Sliced my wrist, jumped out a window, all because of what I've gone through in my life. See, if you can't tell your story and tell the truth about your story, it ain't no use telling it at all, because what we're here for is to help one another. See, my thing is, we all sit back and we complain. We gotta stop complaining, and we gotta go fight for one another. If you walk down the street and you see your fellow man laying down, help him up, pick him up, stop criticizing. I'm gonna say this, Rhonda, and I'm gonna keep it very, very, um, short. I gotta, I've gone through a lot, and it's a lot of us that's going through a lot. But when you have a baby that wakes up in the morning and you don't. We're not living right. I wasn't raised like that. So, my thing is, I'm a country girl. I wasn't used to hot water, truck it on with the faucet, I used to go outside and get it. I wasn't used to having heat in the house, had to go outside and get my wood. So now I'm up here, I'm thinking I'm living better, but it's the same thing. I'm being treated the same way. With that, y'all, we gotta learn how to help one another. And Rhonda, I appreciate you. I love you from the bottom of my heart. Everything you do, I know is sincere, you know? And we gotta realize, Murray and Murray, I mean, Murray Bowser, sorry, Murray and Murray, oh, bless you. Murray Bowser is not for us.
No, she is not.
If we don't see it by now, we'll never see it.
Yes.
We don't have, Trayvon White is not for us.
But no, he.
If you don't see it, you'll never see it. See, because one thing that I know, I got a God that's it tight, and real love. You understand? With that, I love y'all, we gotta pull together.
Alright, that's right, alright, alright. Thank everyone around the town, the citizens, the problems, we make our way out of it. My heartfelt thank goes to the Coalition of Advisors and our community partners, Mr. Kunta Betney of the Union, which you'll hear more from. Dear Dr. Chapman, if you guys wanna hear more about Dr. Chapman, you can go to HealthyDCandMe.org. There's an archives page where we park a lot of his information. And Ms. Marcel Reed, if you wanna join us on the Hill in July, the last Friday in July, we're gonna be a part of the panel, I'll be voting it. So guys, we have our action plan on the second to last page, mobilization demonstration. My question to everyone, as you walk out of this room, are we ready to start shutting down these bridges and landlines? Are we ready to start hosting sit-ins at the Wilson Building and Guarding Congress? I have already started the charge at the United Nations. I don't understand why DC has a designation for being a human rights city. You feeling like your rights are violated, we need to understand what the protocol for them to be re-investigated. It's time for us to make trouble on a larger scale. I know from which I speak, go to HealthyDCandMe.org, check out the Woodbury Project page. There is no reason to keep doing the same thing and getting the same results. We can take it to the next level, are you ready? I'm ready. Two words, no more. The standards are too low. Alright, there's something called a community report card. You have it on your paperwork, you didn't get to speak this evening, no problem. You can go to the community report card. We are the network, look around, look around, look around, you gotta go vote, some of them may get by us. Some of them may get by us, but don't you fret, we're coming down this lane and we're gonna clean house. We didn't get here overnight, it's gonna take us some work. So some of them may get by us, but remember, moving forward, we set the standard. So when that bat goes in the sky, I wanna hear from you. And the question is, will you show up? So the HART Act, it'll be emailed to everyone. First source law being enforced, we're gonna send you language. The language that went out to the United Nations, we're gonna be sending language around for you to sign, we're asking for the protocols, so we know what the numbers need to look like. We need to start making them as uncomfortable as they've allowed your living to be. Are you with me? Alright, thank you guys so much. This concludes the Healthy DC and Me Leadership Civil and Human Rights Town Hall. Remember, you matter, mental health matters, your mental well-being matters.